City Council Meeting Number 1307. Figure 5, 2018. Let it stand for the presidency.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, one nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Call Wellbrook.
Burns.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Herbie.
Holt.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Ness.
Here.
Is there a motion, Mr. Barnes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we excuse Councilwoman Herbie.
Second.
The move is second that we excuse Councilwoman Herbie. Bring out all those in favor of the motion to excuse. Let it be known by the side of the building, all right?
Aye.
Close. That's what I'm here to excuse. Item number two minutes. For all to see the copy of the minutes, are there any additions or corrections? Two minutes. If you're hearing now, the minutes will stand approved as presented. Item number three is presentations. We have a number though this evening. The first of which would be oath of office training Captain William Black. Chief Field.
Congratulations, sir. How are you? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I instate your name.
I, William Black.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
The Charter.
The Charter.
Of the municipality.
Of the municipality.
Of Forest Park, Ohio.
Of Forest Park, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
As training fire captain.
As training fire captain.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, just want to thank my family, uh, the fire department, the city of Forest Park for this opportunity. Um, it's a, a new route for me. Um, used to work in the 2448s, so now being home every night, it's a good thing. Um, being with my family. Um, and also want to let everybody know that training is my number one priority right now and making sure that all the guys and gals are trained to the best of their ability to serve the citizens of Forest Park. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to keep this short. We're talking to Bill. If, if it's okay, I'd like to speak about all four at the end, but, uh, Bill, to me, you represent order. You're very methodical in the things that you do. You're very consistent and I love what you bring to the department.
Okay, next we have three firefighter paramedics to be sworn in. Firefighter paramedic Jason Kaninger. Kaninger?
Kaninger.
Kaninger. And firefighter paramedic Austin Lukin. Austin. And firefighter paramedic Eric Moncrief. Congratulations, gentlemen. Raise your right hands. Raise your right hands and repeat after me. I.
Aye.
State your name.
Jason.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
The Charter.
The Charter.
Of the municipality.
Of the municipality.
Of Forest Park, Ohio.
Of Forest Park, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
As firefighter paramedics.
As firefighter paramedics.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
I just want to thank everybody that's here, my family, um, my soon to be family and, uh, the city of Forest Park for giving me this opportunity. Um, I started here six years ago, so this is where I've wanted to be since I started and I'm glad to be back and glad to be here for the rest of my career. Thank you. Just want to thank my family for supporting me through all the, uh, training and everything you had to go through. Want to thank the city of Forest Park for giving me the opportunity and, uh, just want to say thank you, everybody.
Uh, I've been here nine years now, so I appreciate the trust that you guys have put in me as a city. Uh, I'd like to thank Chief Jones, Chief Hill, uh, Chief Rupen who's still here for having faith in me and putting me in this position. Thank my dad and my family for putting up with my schedule. Thank these guys and gals I work with every day for trusting me as much as I trust them. Thanks.
I'm so happy to see you guys here. When I think about Austin Lukin, I think about exuberance and discipline. He comes to work, he does his job, always first to help, always last to leave. When I think about Eric Moncrief, I think of intelligence. He has a big brain between those ears of his. And, um, I'm glad that you're here. Jason, you are Forest Park. You're Forest Park, born and raised, went to school here. We are blessed to have you. And for you three, you four, my prayer, wish, expectation is that you carry yourself with dignity, with grace, supreme professionalism, and that you enjoy the ride. And I'm extremely thankful that I have the opportunity to work alongside of you. I'm thankful that you guys interviewed to work at the city and I'm thankful that you chosen to share your gifts and your skills with the city of Forest Park. And I'm just looking forward to watching you grow, to watching the journey. Thank you.
Okay, do you guys have your badges or have somebody, do you have someone that want to pin it on? Who's going to pin them on for you? Who's going to pin it on for you? Come on up. There you go. All right. Congratulations. Gentlemen and to your families and friends, on behalf of the city, I want to welcome you to greatest firefighting units in the world, these guys out here. I'm sure you've learned a lot from them already. And there's a lot more to be, to be learned and I know that you're going to be a part of us for a long time. You know, I spend quite a bit of time with you guys one way or another, uh, talking to you on the phone, uh, going to your weddings, having you call me to tell me you got engaged and all of that, so it's, it's family for me as well. And again, I want to thank you for all that you're going to contribute to the city of Forest Park and we look forward to you being here for many, many years to come. Thanks, gentlemen. Is anyone from council who would like to comment?
I just want to say congratulations and, um, I hope you have a long, uh, career here at the city of Forest Park.
Thank you.
I would like to say congratulations and a few of you have, uh, I've had the, the opportunity to watch you work and I was proud of you then and more so now. Welcome aboard.
Thank you for lending your time, your talents, uh, to this great city. We hope that you continue to allow it to be, um, uh, to become the fabric of this city and to you to build the relationships with our students and all our community members and we thank you so much for your service and stay safe.
Mr. Barnes?
I would just like to say congratulations to you all and thanks for choosing Forest Park to, um, spend most of your time. Thank you.
I just want to, you know, recognize the fact that, you know, service is a wonderful thing and to choose the place in which you serve is even better because it's a sign of your character and who you, who you are. And for you to choose Forest Park as, as your, as your garden to serve is a blessing to everyone in this room and you will be blessed for that. Your family is already blessed for the example that you're giving and choosing to serve those who serve is even a greater responsibility. So, so William, I, I pray for you as you work with these young men and women to make them the people who they are in their profession. It, it's a wonderful thing and thank you for the sacrifice that the three of you are making. It's important. I'd be a little bit remiss to break this up a little bit, but I tell you what, you guys, uh, as you were doing your oath, I just said, you know what? If they had somebody that was in a rush or in a panic, the three of them would have just soothed the, the worried nerve because they were just so smooth, right? They sounded like a trio over there singing. So, um, congratulations, gentlemen, to your achievements.
Thank you. And also, as we always say, you know, we want to thank your families because, uh, without, without you, they wouldn't be where they are and without you, we wouldn't have them and we want you to know that we appreciate you for letting us have them for the while that we have them. So, thank you. Gentlemen, thank you again. At this time, we will have a proclamation for, uh, Second Vice Mayor.
Good evening, everybody. City of Forest Park proclamation. Whereas African American History Month is observed annually during the month of February throughout the United States of America and whereas today's African American History Month has its beginning in 1893, when at the Chicago World Fair, Colored American Day was observed. Later Negro History Week was observed in February 1926 through the efforts of Dr. Carter G. Woodson, honored as a father of black studies. And followed with Black History Month in February 1965 through the guidance of Robert Stalin Pritchett, pianist and composer. And whereas the efforts of nonprofit organizations, including those in Forest Park, their offices, members and friends to sponsor events throughout the community promoting African American life and history, doing the observance of African American History Month is to be, to be commended and whereas the acknowledgement of the constructive contributions of African American scholars, businesses and institutions provides inspiration for the entire community and whereas African American residents of Forest Park have made meaningful contributions in this community as well as throughout the United States and the nation. Now therefore, I Charles H. Johnson, Mayor of the City of Forest Park, do hereby proclaim February 2018 as African American History Month and urge all members of our community to join in the recognition of this most significant occasion celebrating harmony and unity. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Holt. And now we will move on with our recognitions, presentations. At this time, I am proud and honored to present to you all and to the city of Forest Park, members of the Witten Woods High School 2017 football team. Gentlemen, would you please stand? Thank you. You can maybe be seated. You know, I'm, I'm probably pretty soon I'm going to get good at this. I, uh, go back to, I think the first one of these I did was on the basketball team was runners-up many, many years ago. I say many, many because I was much, much younger then. This year's team had an overall record of 13 wins and two losses. The one regular season loss was to Elder by one point in overtime. The second loss came in the state championship game to two-time defending champion Archbishop Akron Hoban. There were 24 seniors on the squad and as of today, 11 of them have chosen to college or university where they will continue their education and their football careers. During this year's journey, this team and individuals on this team won several awards. I will attempt to mention some of them. Now, I will tell you, this is a very, very, very long list because they did a whole bunch of good things and they got a whole bunch of good awards. So, just bear with us for a while. The young men on the team received many honors. There were All-Americans, that's a whole country, that's national, that's big. Chris Oats was picked by Touchdown Club of Ohio as an All-American. Is Chris present? Maurice Chapman was named the Anthony Munoz Defensive Lineman of the Year, Defensive Lineman of the Year. You can't get much better than that as a defensive lineman. All right. And on a state level, again, and you're going to hear this name a lot, so get used to it. Chris Oates, Division II Defensive Player of the Year. First team, first team All-State, Chris Oates. Don't you like hearing your name? Second team, Kenny Mayberry. And the honorable mention Maurice Chapman, Leon Williams, Rayquan Prince, and Quinn Smith. All Southwest Ohio, that's prancing out a little bit further. First team, Leon Williams, Rayquan Prince, Maurice Chapman. Getting tired of raising your head, I'll tell you. Paul McKnight, Jaden Miles, Chris Oates again, Jalen Felton, and Johnny Kemp. All right. Second team, Kenny Mayberry, Cornell Beecham, Marcellus Hughes Brewster, Trayvon Poole, and Quentin Smith. All Cincinnati Inquirer, Kenny Mayberry, Leon Williams, Rayquan Prince, Maurice Chapman, Quinn Smith, and Defensive Player of the Year, Chris Oates. Second team, Markeith White. Now, that's just a few of the accomplishments that these young men have made. The other, the other side of the accomplishments that we don't hear enough of is what they do in the classroom, but also what they do as young men. You know, it's easy to pick up the paper or to turn on the TV or listen to the radio and hear all of the bad things about our kids and what they're doing out there, all of the wrong things. We don't often, and we don't nearly enough, hear all of the good things that these great young people do. And it's a testament to their character, what they're taught at home, what they learn at school, that makes them great young men. We ought to celebrate with them and we ought to show our appreciation and show our pride in them. But there's another element, an element that is talked about even less, and that is the element of the people who lead them. And I'm referring to the coaches. You know, it's a little bit like the old story. If the team does well, somebody else gets all the credit. If, if and when they do poorly, everybody wants to be that armchair quarterback and point the finger at the coaches. But until you've walked in those shoes, whether we're talking about the coaches who are out there every day or the really, really silent partners, the athletic directors, who got to make sure that everything is done when it's supposed to be done, on time, things that we never even consider. Is everybody's uniform and equipment in order? Have they got enough of it? Are all the safety provisions in order? Have the grades been checked? Have all of the medical records been done? Have all of the scheduling been done? Believe me, I know this because at one time, a hundred years ago, I used to do that. It's not easy. And as I said, if, if one little thing goes wrong, everybody wants to run and say, the coach didn't do that, the AD didn't take care of that. But somehow or another, we expect that it will all get done as if by magic. And oh, by the way, and this is not an afterthought, I just thought I'd leave this one for now. Coach Parker was named by the Inquirer as Coach of the Year. Also. Also, and stand up again, Coach. Coach Parker was also named the Ohio Division II Coach of the Year. Now, that's big too. I mean, that's, that's Division II all over the state, little ones, big ones, everywhere, southeast, northwest. That's huge. Congratulations, Coach. And congratulations to you, young men. We look to hear from you down the road in the future. Some of you, I'm sure, will be, 11 of you are going to be going on to college to play. Some of you will probably see on TV at Ohio State or UC or that other school, what do they call it, Michigan or, you know, some of those places. And if, if by chance, uh, you and we are fortunate enough, we may relive last night pointing at our TV sets or whatever kind of contraptions they have four years from now and say, hey, I remember him. His name got called at city council about five times and he's now playing for the Patriots or the Eagles, maybe even the Bengals. So, again, thank you for what you've done. You know, when, when you bring honor to yourselves and to your school, that also brings honor to our community. We're very proud of you and I want to personally thank each and every one of you for your contributions to the city of Forest Park. Congratulations, gentlemen. All right, at this time, we will move to item number five, which is communications from the public. But fortunately for you, you don't have to stay for that. Uh, this is the time when we would lose our audience, so if you feel like you need to leave, please feel free to do so. We won't be mad at you. One moment.
If I may, as, as the team leaves and stands up, I think it would be somewhat remiss to not make this point. For many of you who live in Forest Park and have watched these young men grow, one thing that you may often forget, every time a sports team walks onto the field, walks onto the court, they are representing Witten Woods and Forest Park without being a part of a league. Witten Woods is not in a formal league, but every year, every team steps out traveling for many, many miles and I know this team traveled states and cities throughout this area. If you have any motivation and encouragement, please work with the school district and it's not of their own fault that they are not in a league, but work with the school district, encourage those that you know that are in other leagues to bring Witten Woods into a league. They need it, our students need it. It is not fun or appropriate for our students to go to Columbus and Indianapolis and Toledo just for sport. Not that they don't deserve it, but they deserve better than to have to make those trips and those sacrifices. Thank you for you guys and your achievement.
Guys, thank you. Good luck, guys. Thank you. All right. Congratulations, gentlemen. Good job, good job. Coach?
Appreciate you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. Captain? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
That's just me.
Lay down.
Thank you, Denise. Move on. Next item on the agenda is item number four, communication from the public. This is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to five minutes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the council? You want to address the council, sir?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, sir. I'm trying to do it.
Okay. Yes.
My name is Andrew Quick, and I'm from 788 Evangeline Road. And my purpose here for, I received a letter here from Forest Park and stating limitation on the letter. If I'm not, if I'm, if I'm in order, I would like for someone to read this letter out to, to the people here so, so they know exactly where I'm coming from, who did I give this to? They read it out. I have a suggestion that you should have more sound in, in your, in your room because I can't... And I, I, I want you to be distinct with that. Read it.
The letter is from the city of Forest Park dated 1/29/2018. Violation Notice One. It's addressed to Mr. Andrew Quick, J., and Hattie R., 788 Evangeline Road.
Oh, oh, please, I'm sorry, ma'am, but I, I must be, I must be hearing it because I can't, I can't hear you.
Forest Park property code violation. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Yeah, now I hear that. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Um, it has the case number in the parcel. An inspection of the property at 788 Evangeline Road, which occurred on 1/29/2018, had conditions that were in violation of city code. See opposite side of the letter for a list of violations and corrective actions. This notice is being issued to you because you may not have been aware of the code requirement or condition of the inspected property. Your cooperation in this matter is greatly appreciated. If you have questions about this notice, please call me at (513) 338-0150 or contact me by email at miller@forestpark.org. Failure to comply with the notice on, by 4/29/2018 could result in a citation. If the same violation occurs within one year, a citation of, to mayor's court could be issued without further notice. Thank you if you have already corrected the code violation before receiving this notice for the city of Forest Park. Item 155.07, structure exterior paint and satin and stain E. Protective coating of all surfaces. All exterior wood surfaces of a structure shall be treated periodically with a protective coating or other preservative to prevent structural deterioration. All exterior masonry surfaces that have been painted or treated with some other protective covering must be periodically treated with a protective covering or all existing paint must be removed, bringing the masonry back to its natural state. All exterior surfaces shall be replaced or repaired in good condition, preparatory or repainting or coating. All bare exterior surfaces which are fa, which are flaking or crumbling shall be replaced or sealed in a good and work manner, workman-like manner. All new or repaired bare surfaces shall be painted or coated. All exterior surfaces weathered with dirt or grime shall be cleaned and surfaces which are peeling or flaking shall be scraped and painted or covered with approved protective coating or surface. Recommended actions for compliance: Paint sections of your house and/or garage door that have peeling, flaking paint. Repair any deteriorated wood prior to painting. Failure to comply or to have repeat violations within one year will result in an automatic citation being issued to you without further notice.
May I ask you, uh, you gave the letter out. Uh, have, are you, do you think that you are fair with the members of Forest Park of sending such a letter and how you express yourself in the letter? If you, you could speak for that because of, you know, I, it seems like that, that letter, to me, if I'm going to interpret that letter, uh, I did a little law, and do, are, are you complying to the audiences of Forest Park when you send a letter, such a letter like that? The short limitation that you've put on a member of Forest Park?
I, I mean, I fully understand the question, but I believe the letter is appropriate. What it is is a courtesy notice to advise you that apparently you have peeling.
You, you got your item here. This is climate weather here now. Now, you get, on your letter here, I just received that letter last week. And from last week, now you're giving me to April to, to take care of that matter. But I ask the question, do you think that you're treating the members of Forest Park justly by sending such a letter and the statement that you have in your letter?
Well, I can answer the question as city manager. The answer is yes. We are treating you fairly. I think you have an opportunity to contact the property maintenance department and advise them of how you're gonna get that taken care of. They're giving you notice before they issue you the citation. So to that question, I say, yes, you are being treated fairly.
Okay. Because, because I would, I would very pleased with the letter and how it were written. If I violate a audiences of Forest Park, I am willing to cooperate with Forest Park. Now, that letter looks, it's, 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 it's like, it's just like that you have, you as officers having audiences against me. And, 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 and you're trying to get back at me for things that are happening to me.
Sir, can I say something?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I got one of those letters. I'm on city council. I got a letter written the same because I hadn't cleaned up my flower bed in a timely manner. So nobody is picking at you or aiming to you. We're just trying to keep Forest Park beautiful. I did not get offended when I got the letter, which stated basically the same thing. It gave me a timeline to clean up my dead plants and my, uh, flower beds.
Okay.
So it's not directed to you, personally to you, that will go for any member of the city of Forest Park.
Okay. Well, see, I've had a, I had some issues. You know, I'm a member of Forest Park, and I think I've been a very faithful member of Forest Park. I moved here in 1986. And through things, I was seeing things. I, I think I, I come up here to your city. And I tried to reason with people. I tried to have a consultation with the manager. I tried to have a, have a, a consultation with the secretary, but I didn't get no response. And it, 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 me, as my little running, I only went to school a few days. And, and, and I'm trying to see why, if you have an issue with me, then we are, we sit down and have a dialogue. We, we sit down and have a dialogue, sit down and talk the matter over with you. Now, I came up here five times to meet with the officers, the, the head of, of Forest Park plus the assistant. I, no one responded to me. And I thought it was disrespect as leaders to be in such thing. And I think that he should have been, he should have responded to me.
So...
I'm, nah, nah.
You're saying that you, since you got that letter, you came up here five times and nobody responded to you?
No, I, I came up here before then.
When, when was it that you came to talk about this?
No, I didn't, I didn't. No, no, not, 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 not here. Uh, I think I'm, I think I'm coincide, uh, uh, more than one thing. 1944, I had an issue with Forest Park. I think it was construction on the boulevard. And they moved all the equipment off of the, off of the, off of the boulevard. And I came here and I talked with, I came here and I talked with, first I talked with your, 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 your construction person that takes care of the thing. I asked him, "Why are you pulling on, pulling on?" And he said, "Okay, we, we are not, we are not, uh, uh, to be finished until, uh, 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 April of, of, of 2015." I said, "No, you got good weather. Why don't you go on finishing now?" Now, you, 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 you have, have the, have, have the parking, leaving that, go leave the, go leave the boulevard a, a, a two-third finished, and you can't finish the rest of it. And I talked with, I talked with Mr. Hodges. In regards of that, maybe my words to Mr. Hodges wasn't, wasn't right. I'm, I, I apologize if it wasn't right. But I, but it stirred my, it stirred me as managers, as leaders of Forest Park. And I think that, I think that leaders of Forest Park should be better than what they are. That, that was a thing that you and I doing as people. I came here in 1986. They took you uh, 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 2000, I think 15, 15, I believe, or 16 to have a, have a park, fix a driveway from your curb up here over to the, over the, over to the next street. Now, the question is asked, do you think you were fair to the citizens of Forest Park to linger that long? I, I, I'm not here to run Forest Park. I'm here to help Forest Park, not, not to, not to do anything. And, 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 and Mr. Hodges can tell you, when you finished the project, project, I came up here and I talked to Mr. Hodges and thanked him for carrying on. I said, "That should have been done." And I explained it to him. There was a, that, that, the road was all messed up on, 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 uh, on, uh, uh, Sharon. They fixed that. But they never did fix, they had fixed. Looked like amateurs from, from, from Waycroft all the way to Sharon Road. If, 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 if you want good streets, you do good, you, you, you do go work. You don't have to do anything. That was just like, I would, I could have did a better job than you did. They were bumping. I, I told Mr. Hodges, "Go down and ride on it and see how bumping it is." And, 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 and I guess he run, I, I guess he did or did not, but they ain't done it. I'm still bumping. It, 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 it ride like I'm in, in the country. But, but, but I think, now, I, 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 I went out for a walk. On your, on your, uh, uh, on Witten Road, I, 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 I caught myself going to sit down. And I fell, I fell down. The, 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 the bench gave away and it wouldn't even nail. I came up and I told, I, I told someone about that. They, they put some screws in it. They could have at least painted it. They didn't paint it. And it's still the same thing. And, 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 and not only that, but you got, I walked around, there, there are properties right now five times worse than my property. And nobody said nothing to those people. And I did, and I did it for years. I just said, and I did it for years, and nobody said anything. But I thought maybe that since I came in and had an issue with the city, then they, they, they are, they are after me. You know, to, to do things. I, I'm, I'm willing to go according to the audiences, but, but when you said this letter here and from April, from, from the time last week I read that letter up until April, now you will give me that short period of time. And the officials here have been in Forest Park for many years. They have made that. Now, if you come, if you write such a letter here to me in regards of things, or, 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 do you think it's fair? I think it was really unfair. The letter should have been headed differently. I ain't been to college. I ain't got my, 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 my master. I don't have my, my doctor. But I went to school for a few days. And that little notice I have, I have it. And so I think you should be a little better sit down and write a, a different letter here, letterhead, and then you write, then this letter here. Because I think, I think because of the issue that I had, they already gonna get back with me, gonna make me, they gonna make me pay for what I did. But, but I'm willing to pay for, I'm willing to pay. If I, if I did Forest Park wrong, then I'm willing to apologize to Forest Park. I wanted to straighten it out. But giving me such a short time.
Mr., Mr. Quick?
Yes, sir.
Just to bring this to an end.
Yeah, I, big trouble, sir.
All I would ask you to do is this. Contact the people who it asked you to contact on the, on that letter. And if you need more time, as it said in the letter, that's why it asked you to contact them so that they would extend the time for you. That's, that's, that's all you need to do.
Okay. Okay. Well, 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 it was disrespect. It was disrespect for you. I came up here to the death there and I, and, and I came up here about five times, maybe six times. No response. Well, I, Mr. Hodges, Mr. Hodges' secretary didn't even respond. I think that she got a little angry with me because I, what I told her. I said, "You're lesser than the secretary." I said, "You're lesser than the secretary." I said, "At least, then," I said, "at least you and Mr. Hodges should have got together, sit down and talk about it. You call me, and then we go from there." And, and, and she was said, she called me and tell me, said, "Well, Mr. Quick, say, uh, we're not able to come to, we're not able to set up an appointment with you right now because we got so many things, issues and everything, but, 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 but whenever we, uh, whenever that we have time, we'll contact you, and then you would, you, I, then you would come and do, then you would respond there." But I ain't getting no response. And, 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 and did you treat me, how do you think you treated me fairly? You, 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 you want me to like it? You want me to just like that you don't respond to me? You know? Do you think you, did you think me as a, as a member of Forest Park, do you think you treated me fairly or doing that?
Mr. Hodges is gonna respond to, to that right now. Okay. Let me first, uh, thank Mr. Quick for being here and seeing him once again. He is correct. Contacts. One of the reasons why we have not responded to Mr. Quick, the way he's saying that we haven't responded is he's made contact, but he hasn't indicated what it is that he wants to meet about.
wants to meet about. Uh, so, he, he made contact and, and leave a name and number, but doesn't identify what it is. So, there's no one to get back in touch with him because we don't know what he's gonna talk about. Part of the problem is, quite frankly, and we've shared this, sometimes Mr. Quick has come and he has consumed a bit too much time because he's gone over so many different things that we've tried to explain. He is incorrect. For example, you mentioned the Northland Boulevard project. And in your opinion, it was not done as quickly as you felt it should be, be done. Because they worked up to a certain point and then they left and then they didn't come back. It turns out that that is the way streets are built in this region. They have different subcontractors that do certain work. But I want to take through all that. My point being, we explained this, Mr. Quick. We took a lot of time and, and, and explained that. Uh, just get to the point. There is no, uh, animosity towards you, and, and I say this for, for the general public, say, there's no issue. Uh, you're certainly welcome to bring whatever issues you want to bring to the city and we'll be glad to address it.
Okay.
But nobody is taking, uh, some kind of revenge or anything like that against you. You have your opinions, just like we read that letter. You don't believe that letter is written the way you believe it should be written. But as we look at it, it's appropriate. You don't believe that you've been treated fairly, but when we say the facts are laid out, we believe you have been treated fairly. But if there's anything like that letter, it's, it's just a matter of providing an extension. So, to that extent, I, I'm just kind of reaffirming. We are quite familiar with Mr. Quick. We have, we have utilized a lot of time trying to explain things to Mr. Quick. And I'm sure this won't be the last time. But, uh, we don't have any animosity towards you or any, anything along that line. We think you've been treated fairly.
We do.
Again, Mr. Quick.
Yes, sir.
I would ask you to do is contact, there's a contact number on there and a person for you to contact. If you feel you need more time than the, than the three, I think it's ninety or a hundred and twenty days, all you need to do is to contact that person at that number and say that you need more time and they will give you an extension. That's all you need to do.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I, 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 I talked with, I think I talked with the Hodges. Those benches out there in your thing there ain't been cared for, I don't know how long.
The benches over here are for the bus stop.
No, no, those benches out here in, in your, in, in your, out here, out front there.
Okay.
Now, now, you got maintenance people that want to take care of such things, right? Now, that maintenance person ain't doing it. Why are you paying the maintenance person? Why don't you put me on payroll and I make sure that everything is taken care of? Now, 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 I feel that you, you are doing the members of Forest Park, uh, injustice by not caring our duties, your duties as officials to take care of your part, then you can send these letters here to the rest of them. But when you don't do your part, you know?
Okay, Mr. Quick, I'm, I'm going to, uh, ask again, say, contact that person at that number and they will give you the extension that you needed, that you need. And if you have other issues that you want to discuss, all you need to do is contact the city, the receptionist desk, tell them what your issue is and they will direct you to the right person. But at this time, we're gonna have to move on because, you know, we, we're...
Well, I'm sorry to take up so much time, so much time, but, you know, I, I wanted, I want to clear, clear up things and, 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 and doing things. I, I, I asked Mr. Smith. And I said, "Well, I tell you what to do. It's a congratulation of your new assignment." I said, "Can you and I and Mr. Hodges meet together?" He said, "Mr. Hodges, uh, uh, time will be up, uh, two thousand and eighteen." He said he gonna do it. Then no response. I came to the desk, no response. Talked to the secretary, no response. I, I probably made the, maybe I made the secretary, I know that she, I had a little, she was a little heated on the car, right? I, I did it for purpose because I want to wake her to her posted duty. And, 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 uh, when we as Forest Park members, Forest Park is going down from the time I came here. Now, that speaks of leadership. That speaks of poor leadership.
Sir, can you just, um, um, the time allotted for a speaker is normally five minutes. We've...
Oh, I'm sorry. Ma'am, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, ma'am, but, uh, and I'm not angry. I just...
As the mayor said, there's a number that's on the letter.
Okay.
And a person that you can contact and this, you know, he will give you the extension that you need. Okay, we really appreciate.
All right.
We really appreciate you coming and speaking to us tonight, but we must move on. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And forgive me for taking up so much time.
Thank you. Anybody, uh, there's nobody else from the public. So, we will go now into the next item, item number five, reporter standing committee. The first of all is Waving Means. Councilwoman Herbie is absent. Is there anyone from her committee would like to address that? If not, uh, I have no items on the agenda for the work session of the twelfth. Next item is community development, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report.
Any questions for Mr. Burns? Mr. Burns, I have one item for you, community development lens. Do you have any to add?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Next item is the law committee, Councilwoman Collins.
I have no report at this time.
Uh, is there any questions for Councilwoman Collins? Hearing none, I have no items on the agenda for you. Councilwoman Collins, you have any to add?
Yes, I would like it placed on the next work session, um, that the council discuss the, um, suspension of the twenty-five dollar shelter fee ordinance.
I don't think we have a twenty-five dollar shelter fee ordinance. I think we have an ordinance that addresses, uh, set of fees that was recommended to council by Parks and Recreation Commission. Are you asking council to address the one fee? Or are you asking them to, uh, what, what specifically are you asking to, to be discussed on the work session agenda?
The twenty-five dollar shelter fee. Uh, that should be, uh, was, was supposed to, uh, be implemented, started February first for our residents. I'm, I would like it placed on, uh, the next work session that we discuss it.
I am putting on the work session a discussion of the twenty-five dollar shelter fee. Okay? Any questions for Councilwoman Collins? And that will be placed on the public improvement and facilities, Moore. Okay, next item on the agenda would be, uh, human resources committee, Councilwoman Holt.
I do not have a, I don't have a report tonight. Thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Hearing none. Councilwoman Holt, I don't have any items for you. Do you have any to add?
No, I do not. Thanks.
Next report is human resources, uh, next report is public improvement and facilities, Councilwoman Moore.
I have no report at this time.
Councilwoman Moore, I don't have any items except the ones that I just put on the agenda for you. Do you have any to add?
Um, no, thank you.
Next report is public safety, Councilwoman Nuss.
Uh, yes, just a brief one. Um, public safety met, uh, a couple of weeks ago, uh, with, um, leaders of the fire department, police department. Uh, was a very nice meeting as well as, um, fellow councilwoman Rosalynn Moore and, uh, Mr. Mayor Charles Johnson. Uh, we discussed a number of different goals, uh, and upcoming, uh, things that they are focusing on in our community. Uh, undoubtedly, they are doing a fantastic job in all respects. Um, one challenge, um, our police is, is facing is, uh, trying to keep our, our numbers at a certain, uh, level at that thirty, trying to get that thirty-ninth, um, officer hired and, and some clerks, uh, hired is seems to be, um, a bit of a challenge. But other than that, it was a great, um, great meeting to, to get to know one another and to, um, continue to help, uh, build Forest Park and protect it. Um, Phil Cannon's retirement, uh, Phil Cannon is the, um, is our, uh, chief of police. His retirement was announced for June first, two thousand and eighteen. And on this coming Friday, February ninth, at nine AM, at the senior center, the Forest Park Police Department invites the entire community to come out to celebrate the new K-9, uh, the K-9 team that we have. Uh, that was, um, they'll also recognize Emeritus and Matt Havercamp Foundation for their generous donations in making the K-9 team possible. That concludes my report at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Questions for Councilwoman Nuss? Hearing none, Councilwoman Nuss, I have one item on the agenda, the jail services agreement. Do you have any to add?
For work session, sir? Uh, just that we, um, talk about the Better Bus Coalition and our support, um, alongside, uh, Springdale. Councilman Burns had made a, um, a recommendation a couple of months ago about that. And I'd asked for us to have another, um, to put that on the work session to get some more details and exactly how, um, our residents are impacted. That information has come in and the Better Bus Coalition would, um, I think it would do us well to have a conversation about it, um, privately. And then, uh, if we feel the need to bring them so that they can, um, engage our residents with the support that they're looking for.
Okay. Thank you. I'll put that on the list. Uh, next item is, is the government relation and communication. This is my committee. I have no report. I'll answer any questions if there are any. Next item is item number six, the mayor's report. I have no report at this time. Item number seven, city manager's report, Mr. Hodges.
Thank you. Um, first report that the departmental reports have been completed, included in the council packet and also placed on file with clerk of council for public I'll also report that I have, uh, issued today that is public record, uh, and into that executive summary there, various items of activity within the city that I would, uh, refer you and the public to. And then finally, I would report that we're in the process of preparing the next issue for the progress. We anticipate that we'll get it out, uh, within about another week or so. Um, and that will also help update the community on activities that are going on in the city. So, that would conclude my report, but I would respond to any questions if there are any.
Any questions for the city manager? You move to item number eight, other report. The first of all being law director, Mr. Wyckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since last meeting, I did review the proposed, uh, contract with city of Springdale regarding jail space. Also reviewed, um, some issues regarding, uh, surveillance cameras and surveillance audio. And finally, uh, I think my legal opinion regarding the authority to impose fees such as the shelter fee, um, was distributed to anybody, everybody. And if there are any questions about, uh, any of those items, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for the law director? Hearing none. Thank you, sir. Next report is clerk of council, Mrs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that resolution numbers zero-one and zero-two dash twenty-eighteen were posted as required. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for clerk of council? Hearing none. Um, move to the next item, new business. On the new business, there's a motion, Councilwoman Holt.
I would, um, like to make a motion authorizing the mayor to adjust and complete the execution of contract authorized by resolution number forty-seven dash twenty-seventeen. There is an exhibit A, appointing city manager.
Second. And moved in second that we, uh, the mayor be authorized to adjust and complete the execution of the contract that was authorized by resolution forty-seven dash twenty-seventeen, uh, appointing Mr. Hodges as city manager. Is there any discussion?
No, the exhibit is attached, which is a, a manager employment agreement.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to, uh, authorize the adjustment and completion of the contract, let it be known by the sign of voting, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Next item on the new business is item B is a motion from, uh, for clerk of council, uh, Councilwoman Collins.
Yes. Um, I move to, I move to direct the clerk of council to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that the city of Forest Park does not request a hearing regarding a liquor license request to shooters, Winton LLC, DBA, shooters, ten eighty-one Smiley Avenue and side patio, Forest Park, Ohio.
Right clerk to notify Department of Liquor that we do not request a hearing on the issue of shooters. Is there any discussion?
Yes. The police department has reviewed this matter and has no particular concerns about the request that would be cause for voicing an objection. Shooters now has locations and here.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting, aye.
Aye.
As a six to zero. Is there any other business to come before the body? Any further business to come before the body? Hearing none. Meeting is adjourned.